Even though it's not on here.
All righty. Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Pauli?
Here.
Commissioner Mum? Mayor Neely?
Here. Commissioner Mum is out for awhile and I think I understand her prognosis is pretty good. Is that right, Dan?
Yes.
Yes. And so, that was very good news because I think for awhile we didn't know what the problem was, but apparently it's, it'll be seen in the near future. She's been ill and I made that announcement at the last commission meeting. Does anybody have something listed for future agenda items I do for this session? I would, I would like to have actually a discussion that may involve bringing other people in, but a discussion about the rapid rail alternatives that are being considered for Eugene into this area and whether the ultimately the City Commission would want to make a recommendation.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Okay. Our first discussion item we have here is tools for incentivizing industrial lands and of course will be Eric Underwood.
Mayor, I've invited Mr. Mike Williams of Business Oregon to join us tonight and he's going to talk with you a little bit about the economic impact of industrial lands and some of the successes that have been happening in the region and somehow the programs work. But before we get into that, I would like to just kind of give an overview of some tools that are out there that are available as we begin to think about industrial development and move forward in our economic development efforts. This is just informational this evening, so if you have any questions along the way, please feel free to stop me. There is a definite need for industrial land, not only in Oregon City, but in the region as well. I think there's been a recent study that's come out. It was put on by the Portland Business Alliance and I think, I forget the name of it here. It's called Land Availability: Limited Options. So they kind of did an inventory of industrial lands throughout the region and bottom line is it showed that the region as a whole is lacking an inventory for industrial lands or employment lands and when I say that, I'm talking about lands that are 25 acres or more. So the need for industrial land, I mean, large industrial employers are looking for market-ready sites. Time is money. They want to be able to go quickly. Michael will elaborate a little bit on that later in the presentation. They have quick timelines that they need to meet. As I said, the Portland metro region lacks adequate inventory for these types of lands. Typically, the upfront costs in getting these sites prepped and ready for development are very costly and can be very risky as well. And the supply of market sites is also a statewide concern. It's not just a regional concern. So there's concern throughout the state on this issue. The role of industrial land for us would be to advance our economic growth. It would be part of the critical job creation that I think the commission has a goal and seeing that develop. Industrial lands of this size typically employ high-paying, high-wage jobs and traded sector, which is, which are companies that sell their goods outside of the state, basically. So national and internationally. So they're bringing in new money. It certainly enhances the quality of life for the community, increases services, and it pays for, help pays for the amenities that we can offer our citizens. And it definitely contributes to the economic diversity where we're not as dependent on one certain type of use or market. Some of the tools that are out there available to help spur this industrial growth include the Enterprise Zone Program, which maybe many of you have heard of. Strategic Investment Zones is another. Industrial Development Projects of State Significance. Regionally Significant Industrial Properties or Areas. And Industrial Site Certification. And Brownfields Program. And so I'll briefly touch upon these and give you an idea of what they are. So Enterprise Zone, it's a state program administered by the state, but it's sponsored locally. So the local jurisdiction takes on the program. They draw the boundaries. They choose how to incentivize within the zone. It's a non-retail, so it's again the traded sector, the industrial type of companies or use. And it's a property tax exemption program, typically from three to five years. And it can be extended under certain circumstances, but the exemption excludes land, so it's only property tax exemption for equipment and structures. And it's geared toward our local development efforts. Again, we can kind of customize it to work for the city. And it's certainly tied to job creation and job training. So a company that's within the zone has to increase their employment by 10% the first year or one, or one new job. It has to maintain that for, I think it's a period of, the period of tax exemption.
Before you, could you go back to that? I just had one question. I understood the nature of the tax exemption program, it freezes the taxes for a period of time. Is that what happens?
Well, they don't pay the property taxes within that three- to five-year period. And so it's just to help them get them on their feet and get them running. And then you would, they would pay after the five-year period.
Now, this kicks in after, after construction? That is, it's three to five years after.
Right. New construction, new investment.
So, but what I'm saying is, from the time the business is actually able to operate or at the beginning of construction, the tax exemption?
I believe it's the beginning of construction. I'll have to go back and see, but I believe it's, I'm pretty sure it's the beginning of construction.
Thank you.
There's Strategic Investment Zones, which is also a property tax exemption program, but that's for larger capital investments. In a urban area such as Oregon City, it would be an investment, a minimum investment of $100 million. It's geared, it's focused on traded sector businesses. Again, companies that are selling their product or service outside of the state. And instead of just being totally exempt from the property taxes, they're required to pay what's called a community services fee. And that's on the first $25 million of investment. That's what that's based on. And the project must receive local approval, so it has to be voted on by the local jurisdiction in order for it to be implemented.
You mean the council or the?
Right. The governing body has to vote on that. And there's the Industrial Development Projects of State Significant. And so in generalities, it's a kind of a one-stop shop. It's an expedited permitting process through the state. There is a EERC or expedited, do you know the, EERC? I can't recall what that stands for.
Well, it's the Economic, it's the Revitalization Council.
Yeah, right. It's appointed by the governor. So it's to help those large employers come in and get all of their permits approved at one time within one entity. They coordinate with the local jurisdictions, the local permitting process, DEQ, state lands, all of that is done right there. It involves a significant investment of private capital and it too is tied to job creation. But it does require community involvement and community support for this program. Only 10 industrial projects of state significance per biennium, so it's pretty competitive. And there's the regionally significant industrial areas. The area has to be zoned for an industrial use and it should contain vacant sites for use or employment. The characteristics of the site should have the significant competitive characteristics, whereas you wouldn't find them within the, you wouldn't find these type of characteristics within the region other than the site that is considered regionally significant. And it should have very good access, transportation, infrastructure, so. And it should be in close proximity to major labor job markets.
If I could add, Eric.
Sure.
We've just designated the first two of those regionally significant industrial areas across the state. And on September 28th, we did a collection of industrial land in Goshen, south of Eugene. It's county-zoned industrial land. And we also did a number of properties in central Douglas County, just north of Roseburg along I-5. And we are actively, the state's actively seeking sites in the metro area for this designation. We definitely think that the metro area has a unique collection of sites that are not only regionally significant, but of statewide significance. I mean, that's really what these sites are, are sites that the, that the state, along with the localities that want these sites designated, want to put their resources and their marketing efforts and to highlight for industrial users.
It's been several years, but some years ago, Metro was identifying industrial lands in regard as regionally significant.
Correct. They have their own overlay.
It didn't, it didn't list any of ours in that process.
Yeah. Yeah, they have, Metro has kind of their own, their own map, or the city of Portland, I think, has their own.
Actually, it came through the Metro, it came through Impact.
Okay, okay, okay.
So I'm sure they were looked at for the whole metro region.
Right. But we are actively, we're asking communities, if you feel like you have industrial sites that you want to protect, that you want to enhance, that you want to tell the market. It's sort of like putting another blue ribbon on your site. And it's also telling potential users that the industrial neighborhood's going to be protected, you're not going to be encroached upon because there are, there are rules around the program. If you, if you have a site like that, that you're really dedicated to staying industrial, you may want to consider this program.
And there's the Industrial Site Certification Process. Creates sites to be market-ready, or it elevates them to become highly marketable. They have to be project-ready and the trick is they need to be project-ready in six months or less. So they're pretty much, the permitting is pretty close to being taken care of. There's infrastructure there in place. It's just, you know, dig and go. However, as this process, as we start this process, you know, most of the sites will become decision-ready before becoming certified.
Yeah, and if I could, that's a program that I administer. And if I could just give you my quick elevator speech on that. We've certified 73 sites across the state since 2006. We've seen some development on 30 of those sites, so we feel like this has been a successful program. We're still certifying sites. We've got a site in Gresham and a site in Newport that we're going to have, the independent certifier is going to be looking at in the, in the coming month or so. And we're, we have a goal of doing about six sites a year and we think we can continue on doing that with this program.
We talk about create sites that are ready for construction within six months or less. It almost sounds like the infrastructure has to be in place.
Yeah, we, yes, it does. What we do look at, sometimes it's a note, when we see it standard with transportation and with utilities, sometimes we make a judgment call that the utilities could be put in concurrently with a site that starts construction within six months. Because sometimes you could do some of that utility work, you know, if you break ground in six months and then you've got another nine-to-12-month window for development, if the utilities can be done concurrently and if the city and the site owner show that you have, you have a plan, you know where it's going to go, you've got some preliminary engineering, and you've got a reasonable way to finance it. And some of that could be the user on the site pays for all or a portion of it, we will go ahead and certify.
There may be some grant opportunities out there as well for the infrastructure.
Right. And we're cognizant of the fact that we don't want to be spending too much money putting things into the ground and having them sit and wait. We, we're developing new programs. I think in this legislative session, you're going to see some new proposals for financing programs for fast-track financing and construction of infrastructure. And that's to have money and plans and infrastructure that's just on the verge of ready-to-go that we could approve very quickly. That's sort of been pre-approved if a bird in hand, if an actual opportunity lands. That's a direction that the IFA is going. We'll see if that happens, but I think, I think that's a good direction because I think it's a, it's kind of a wise way to work with our infrastructure money.
We currently have a transportation system plan that will be coming for us in the not-too-distant future and it squares some attentions being given to lines that we've identified around Quacklins Community College as industrial lands in that effort.
Yeah, I'm familiar with those sites. Eric's maybe familiar with those.
So the key really to site certification, in my experience anyway, is what's crucial is the partnerships that you have in moving that forward.
Absolutely.
Especially with the, with the landowners or those who have control of the land. One of the successful ones that I know of that wasn't listed, it was early on and I had professional experience with it, is in Fairview off of 223rd. It used to be the former Townsend Berry Farms property. So I worked with the state in getting that certified and I think they have five or six large companies out there now employing high-paying jobs. And there is, I'm going to have to move on, there's Electronic Commerce Zones or E-Zones. It's a special status designated within a current or existing enterprise zone. And it's focused on e-commerce. And so e-commerce is defined by those companies that are doing a lot of their sales or operations via internet or electronically. So there's a credit, an additional credit for that program and a property tax abatement. Then there are the brownfields. And so this is a program that helps contaminated sites get project-ready. And so it funds anywhere from evaluation through redevelopment. So it could, you could use the money for evaluation, the cleanup, the assessment. So there's, there's certain financing within that program that you can achieve that.
The brownfields could be used for a number of uses, but the industrial traded sector uses get quite a bit of preference. And part of that is that it's administered through Business Oregon and that's, that's our mandate is to promote those types of businesses.
And you'll see in parentheses up there, it says actual or perceived brownfield, so.
Yep, that's the nature of them.
Are you familiar with our landfill site here in Oregon City?
I don't believe I am.
Okay. Some, we have a zone, I think, as some excuse, there've been some people that have suggested maybe they have value for industrial land, but Metro had looked at some of the brownfields and the most successful ones that were developed, none of them were, in the metro area were really, end up being industrial land.
Yeah, it's tough with valuations. It's much easier, you can squeeze a lot more value when you're doing residential or commercial just because that land's worth a lot more and that really incentivizes the brownfields. And you're absolutely correct, especially on a large scale. Within the state, there's just a few examples of large brownfield, industrial to industrial brownfield developments. Truckdale Rentals is one. Hopefully, we're going to have one in the DOWs as well, which is an aluminum plant as well. But yeah, that is, that is correct. It's a real challenge with industrial land.
Thank you.
Some programs that could be a possibility that are more local, that we could look at in the future is expedited permitting and the planning process where maybe if we identify a certain type of company or certain use, we could have permitting more streamlined or pre-permitted. I mean, that's the ultimate goal and some communities have done that. There's also Urban Renewal, which is a local tool that could help finance some of the infrastructure to get some of the sites ready. And then again, the Enterprise Zone, which was described a little bit earlier. And so that's kind of it for the overview for me. And if you don't have any questions for me, I can switch it over to Michael. He's got a presentation here to give you some more of the specifics and the impacts. Your slide, if you'd like.
Yeah, the, so my name is Michael Williams with the State of Oregon, Business Oregon. I'm the industrial land specialist. So my full-time job is working with industrial sites across the state. And really, our focus is taking zoned industrial land. Our focus is for the most part within UGBs, within areas that are already zoned industrial, and finding ways to bring jobs and to build the tax base on those, on those sites. Next slide. Why do we do this? Well, the economic impacts can be big. Sometimes the investments that have to be made to bring these sites, to bring the infrastructure to these sites, to work on the wetlands and brownfields mitigation and all the other issues on the sites can be expensive. But also, you can have some really big impacts, impacts as well. You know, in this case here, you, these are in millions of dollars and these are some, this was 11 case studies that were done across the metro area where they took 11 sites that were considered not quite shovel-ready, just outside the shovel-ready bounds, and they needed some work to become shovel-ready. And they looked at the cost to bring them to a shovel-ready status and then they put on various different types of businesses on them. And you can see the jobs impact, you can see the payroll impact, the 20-year impacts on the payroll tax to the state as well as the property tax revenue to the localities. So it can, it can be some, some big numbers all around in terms of jobs, income, and tax revenue. In terms of demand for sites, a lot of our focus of the state is large sites. Obviously, we can't focus on, I'm a kind of a one-person program, so our focus is on larger, higher-impact sites. But large sites are important. Mind you, when you're, when you're, when you're developing an industrial site, oftentimes it's only about 40% to 60% developable because of various, because of setbacks and wetlands and other issues. I think also in Oregon, we have this sort of mentality of one employer per site because of our land use system and how we look at land use and UGB expansions. But I think you should also think in terms of business parks. Business parks are really efficient ways to develop land. And having public and private business park owners, ownership is probably one of the most efficient ways and one of the best ways to develop your zoned industrial land over time. But we do have consistent demand from users in the kind of the 50 and 100-acre range. In terms of our statewide leads, about 25% of our leads statewide want 25 or more acres. We've also surveyed brokers in the metro area. They're showing about 11, what are they showing? 11 leads a year for sites greater than 50 acres. So that demand is there and that demand is for sort of the, kind of the big, high-impact users. I mean, obviously, you should be thinking about large and small developments. You know, a smart developer in developing a business park will have a space for large and, large and small users. The big users don't come around as much. And the other thing you should know about industrial land and industrial development, we did a study where we looked at the 30 years of industrial study, of industrial development in the, 20 years of industrial development in the metro area, and over 50% of the demand came in two, three-year cycles. And that's one of the reasons why you've got to be ready for when lightning strikes. That's, that's really important when you're in this business. The demand isn't always, isn't always consistent and it, and it happens during these business cycles when we get sort of a, kind of an industry that really likes Oregon, whether it was clean tech in the last cycle or data centers in the current cycle or who knows what. Maybe it'll be reshoring in the next cycle. So, but you've got to be ready for it. And you've got to, and I always, I'm always, one theme I'm always saying is hurry up, get ready, and then be patient, you know? So it's like hurry up and wait. And that's a tough message for a lot of, for a lot of communities. In terms of why do we have a site certification program? Well, I think having sites ready to go in terms of the community as well as the owners of these sites and relating to them, that's one of the things that you have control over. You really don't have control over how far you are from a freeway for the most part. You don't have a lot of control over how big your labor force is over time. I mean, obviously, you make investments in education and housing and growth, but that happens incrementally. You don't have control over proximity to other markets and suppliers and supply chain issues. But the things that you do have control over is how deals get done. And deals get done because you've got brokers and site selectors who are looking to make deals work. They're not always looking for, they're looking for good sites, they're looking for sites that, that work for their clients, but they want to do sites where the deals will get done because that's how they get paid, that's how they're successful. So how do deals get done? Well, they're risk averse. They're looking for reasons, they've got a lot of sites to choose from, they're looking for reasons not to choose your site. They're looking for reasons to take you off a list. So they're very risk averse, they're very competitive, and they're very deadline-driven. Really, the real estate costs are not always a big part of the long-term costs of running a facility. Usually, the first, the highest cost is the labor cost and then the materials cost. So they're really worried about getting their product to market. And so they want to know what they need to do on the site today and how do they get on the site, get on it quickly. So those deal-driven factors are things that you do actually have control over.
I might, before you go, on the one site that we've always been hoping would work are the ones around the college, which you said you were familiar with. 213 effectively is an expressway to 205 and the airport access and the college is looking to expand its manufacturing program there, so I would assume that could be a labor source.
Oh yeah, Mr. Mayor, absolutely, absolutely. And that would be something to emphasize because also, training, having training facilities and having them so close and such close proximity is a, is a competitive advantage.
I was trying to think of the reasons now of why they wouldn't want to select a site. I thought of a couple of good reasons why they would, but.
One of the, one of the main things we find out is oftentimes the sites, in terms of not selecting a site, is the site's not on the market. Or we'll find out that the landowner doesn't have a price for the site. And a lot of the site selectors don't want to deal with a, with a site where there's not a price because they know that that can mean, they may not be serious about selling today. So that's a, those are important things to have. I'll speak, I talk a lot about readiness. We, this is sort of a, kind of a, sort of a timeline of readiness and various stages of readiness that, that we see in our department. And our department in terms of land development, we're really focused on the project-ready, which is the shovel-ready term, the ready-to-go in six months or less. And I think we have the most comprehensive and thorough and one of the toughest programs in the country for doing that. We've got more sites that have gone into our program that haven't been certified than sites that have. So it's not an easy, it's not an easy process. It often takes more than a year to do and oftentimes, if there's costs and things that need to be done. We have a new program called Decision Ready, which is based, which is, which is less expensive, it's easier to do in terms of, the Decision Ready program is just about daylighting all of the issues on the site, the good and the bad and the ugly, I like to say, and getting those out front. Potential employers, developers, they'll take on wetlands, they'll take on environmental issues if they know what they are and they can pro forma those issues and if they can find a solution. So if they really like a site, they will take on a few problems. So we try to tell landowners, communities don't do this, but landowners do it more, stick their head in the sand and pretend that the problems are not there. And it's really important to just get those problems up front and, and they'll, if, if a potential user's really interested, they'll, they'll work on those things, but they just want to know what they are.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner.
I don't remember if it was Hood River or the DOWs that I listened to at the League of Oregon Cities Conference about, but they have an aluminum, an old, an abandoned.
The Northwestern Aluminum Site?
Right. And which one is that? Is it the Hood River?
Uh, that's in the DOWs. That's, yeah.
The DOWs, okay. Anyway, they talked a lot about their problems with environmental issues like wetlands caused from old truck track areas and things like that. So is that, does that fall between your decision-ready and your project-ready dealing with those issues?
Yeah, exactly. The decision-ready process would, would daylight those issues, that you've, you've got a wetlands here or you need, you need something that needs to be determined. Because what I would do is I would go to Department of State Lands, I have a, I have a dedicated contact there who's really great, good problem solver. He would look at the site, give us an all-clear, or he would say, you're going to have to dig a little deeper and maybe do some studying to see if there's actually a wetlands.
Okay, so if they want to move up to the project-ready, would those wetlands have been dealt with?
Wetlands, the project-ready status for wetlands would be identifying the wetlands, so paying for a study, which is probably about a $10,000 study on average to identify all of those wetlands. And then they'd, then they'd.
all of those wetlands, and then to come up with a reasonable mitigation plan that could be implemented within the six-month window.
Okay.
And so that would be the, that would be how we would do it.
Okay.
How we would do it there. Yeah, and that's interesting, the wetlands problems they're having is actually not on the Northwest Aluminum Industrial Site, it's on a neighboring site that the commercial developer's looking to build, I believe it's a Walmart or a similar large box, and they have vernal pool issues.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. In terms of opportunities across the, across the metro area, so this, this one takes a little bit of explaining to do. You've got three tiers here of sites over, this is sites over 25 acres. And tier one is the Project Ready, ready-to-go. So we've got three in Multnomah County, there's one in Clackamas County, and five in Washington County, of 25 acres or more that are considered ready-to-go today in six months or less. The second tier is within six to 30 months. So these are, and also those, that first tier, that tier one, the green, is what I would call also recruitment-ready. This is what the majority of recruiters would be looking for. The second tier, these sites are still in play, they take a little, they need a little more work, but they're great sites for employers that are already in the metro area, that are thinking to expand, that could be a little more patient, that could be a little more methodical in terms of their expansion needs. These are good sites for them, but we would like to get them to tier-one status. And then we've got a lot of difficult tier-three sites across the, across the metro area. I think your opportunity here in Oregon City is that Clackamas County is a very competitive market. I always say that 90% of the state would love to be anywhere in Clackamas County due to your, due to your labor force, your highways. Being near the airport is a big deal, especially for developing large sites, because these large employers tend to have a lot of people, suppliers and customers, other people coming in and out. They tend to be larger companies, more internationally focused. So you have a real market opportunity, I believe, here in Clackamas County in getting some kind of more sites to, getting more sites to market. And then I was just gonna end with a few success stories here. This is a sign that we put up in front of a lot of the certified sites across the state. And I was gonna just kind of run through a few of the, kind of the larger ones that we've done. The Google Data Center in the Dals, that was on a certified, that was on a certified site that's been very successful. Actually, the Northwest Aluminum Site, the Commissioner Roth that you mentioned, is just to the right of that. The site, you can see the, the large building there is now gone, just a little to the, kind of the upper right-hand corner there. That building there is over a million-square-foot smelter that's now gone, and that's completely flat. And it's a new, new development. Next slide. Solacix in Portland, that's at, that's at Bybee Lake Industrial Center. That was one of the first certified sites. In Salem, we have the Sanio Manufacturing Facility, that's been real successful. One of the reasons why you want large sites, this is a good example, is that they wanted 20 acres to start with, and they have to have 20 acres next to it for future expansion. They may never expand, but they wouldn't have taken the site without that additional 20 acres for that, that's part of their whole, the whole economics of going with that site. And like I said, it doesn't always happen, but it's oftentimes needs to be there. And 20 acres, I'm finding, is we've got a lot of employers that are right around that range, that 20 acre and need another 20 acre range. That's a good kind of sweet spot for, in terms of kind of a reasonable type deals that we see. Genentech, that's 90 acres, that's in Hillsborough, that's also on a certified site, wouldn't have happened without certification. Those are just a few of the examples. And one of the more recent ones is the Facebook in Prineville. They landed on a certified site, and they've said frequently that that's one of the reasons that they took that site.
I have two questions. One is, I understood if we want to bring emerging technology, clean technology, tech, that kind of stuff here, we need to have these six-month and under things because they have to hit the market very quickly. And so we have to get ready for those type of things.
Yeah.
And so your, the program that you work with helps get ready for the broad spectrum of industry, or it doesn't focus on any one of those?
Oh, very broad spectrum.
Okay.
Very broad spectrum. I mean, we've, we've got, we've got successful warehouse distribution centers in the valley, the Lowes in Lebanon, and the Home Depot, both home products, distribution centers in Salem.
Okay.
So we look at sort of the broad spectrum of industrial. And you know, we're in support of the warehouse and distribution along with the clean tech because we feel like it also supports the logistics, other companies, the port. So from a statewide basis, we find that pretty important.
My other question was in conglomerating properties that may be in the hands of many owners. Do you work in that?
Yeah, that's a real tricky issue because some of the tools have been taken away for doing that, you know? And, and that's an issue that I think you, we should monitor carefully because we're looking for new tools for doing that. That came up with that, the regional study that Eric mentioned earlier, in terms of, that's one of the really big challenges in the metro area, especially with our tight UGBs, is how do we find ways to get owners to work together? Hillsborough's done that successfully, so you can either talk to Hillsborough, or if they don't want to share, we can share, may possibly sit down with you and share some of the things that they've done in terms of approaching landowners and getting them to work together. Finding the right brokers who are good at that, who've got a good, long view is another thing, and getting multiple owners together.
Yeah, they had also talked about, they had worked through that process and also with annexation and, what was it, forming MOUs to have a one representative...
Memorant of understanding, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, for the most part, industry won't look at sites that aren't, that aren't already annexed, and we don't focus on that as much because it's much, it's difficult to sell that. And then with ownership, we try to keep, you know, under, you get more than three owners, it starts getting pretty tricky. It can be done, but it can get pretty tricky.
Okay, thank you.
That's basically it, unless there are other questions. Just like to state that, you know, I believe Oregon City does have an opportunity in the fact that the way the boundaries are positioned, not only, we have some industrial land inside the city, we could have more. We have land inside the city that could be industrial, but we have an opportunity, I think, to take a lead on supplying industrial land in the region, I believe, or at least for Clackamas County, just with what's available to us currently.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I appreciate you coming out here and working with us.
Welcome.
It's my pleasure.
Good information.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure we've ever had this kind of a dialogue before, and thank you, thank you, Eric, for doing this, and I assume Eric will be talking to you more.
Yeah.
I, you know, Eric, I was just thinking, you know, we were talking about, we do have some industrial lands already so-zoned, we have some outside our, outside our city better than our urban growth boundary, and you indicated maybe there's some other lands that maybe rezone. I don't know if that was your indication or not. But at one point or another, working with Tony here and as we're going through our comp plan in particular, if we could maybe in our study session, seeing where these lands are, where other potential lands are. Because, because this is probably a very ideal time to look at it.
I did attach a map to the staff report of the industrial lands. We have roughly 148 gross acres of industrial land inside the city currently. I say gross acres because, you know, we haven't dealt with the environmental issues or right-of-way or utilities or anything like that. So that's what we have available to us.
Now, this is within the city boundary.
This is what we have right now.
Yeah.
Yes, within the city boundary currently. And I think with the Beaver Creek Plan, it's another 170 rough acres that we could add to that. And what's beautiful about that is it's all, it would be all together, all adjacent. And so it's, would be very marketable, very attractive to these larger employers.
One of the things that's come up on more than one occasion is these electric, these power lines that are transacting this area, but I guess they can store things under power lines and so forth. I mean, they can be used for those lands that are under power lines?
Yeah, they propose a development challenge, but there, there are ways to utilize portions of that, depending on the line itself and the number of factors.
Yeah.
The other thing I've heard about that area that concerns me is that it's transportation-challenged in, as far as getting off of 205, coming up another expressway that's an uphill pull for large trucks and that kind of thing. Is that something that's really to be considered or not?
Yeah, I mean, I do think it's, it should be considered, but I think there's, there's good, objective ways to do that, Commissioner. I think that there are, there are plenty of good transportation firms, and also our, our department will give you a very honest assessment in terms of how big of a barrier that is. In terms of a marketability.
Right.
When I heard that, I gave it a little bit of thought and did a little bit of looking at it. And our elevation difference going from 205 up to the hilltop and the distance there, actually, it's better than Highway 26 that serves Hillsborough area and so forth. I mean, we're not the only place that has that kind of constraint.
Correct, correct. You ever seen the industrial park in John Day? It's up on the step where the airport is, it's quite a, it's quite a lift. But you would definitely have a different user looking here than at John Day.
Right.
So we do have another barrier in the fact that the sites that we do have now are not served by utilities, so we would have to have utilities.
Yeah, and that's, that's definitely another important factor. Sites that can bring a lot of water, sites that can bring a lot of power are in high demand. So if, if you've got an opportunity to, to bring a site like that on, you've got just one more thing, one more competitiveness factor working in your favor.
And just rest assured that, you know, the state and myself, we have a close working relationship, and so when we're ready to implement some of these programs or talk to some other property owners, I'm sure we can partner together and move forward on that, so.
Yeah, and Eric will be monitoring the legislature. I think there's gonna be some good programs for localities, possibly coming out of this, you never know with, with the state legislature. But there's a lot of interesting proposals that are out there, this, that are gonna be forwarded this session.
And you, I'm sure you know about the League of Oregon Cities, it's fun to ask for legislation for using lottery monies for loans for infrastructure that get paid, that get paid back when the Development Act triggers.
Right, yeah, there's a lot of things swirling around, so it's always, it's always, you know, good to kind of monitor what's going on statewide.
Very quickly, our next step.
Well, we, we'd probably just look at the area that we want to focus on and see how we might start the conversations of maybe incentivizing the land that we do have, or talking to other property owners to see where their interest lies as far as maybe joining in in that effort. And I don't know if they have entertained the thought of maybe selling their land or buying other land to conglomerate for industrial campus-type uses, but I think we start the conversations if we're serious about doing this. I think it would behoove the city to get serious about doing it.
I'd just like to go on record as, you know, I think this is extremely important. I don't think we're going to go anywhere without doing something immediately.
Right.
Because we're stuck.
Yeah, we need to get a firm plan in place.
And I would really like to get...
Sort of timeline going, I totally agree.
I'd really like to get something that was a six-month piece, ready to go.
The, the land in between Beaver Creek and Malala, that's, is that fir and red soil?
Yeah, fir.
Okay, so most of, there's only a couple parcels in that area left.
They're very small. I think it's 2.4 acres combined.
Okay, and then the area out towards Beaver Creek, the purple area, those are all just pieces that would have to be pieced together like you were talking about with the property owners?
Right, yeah, and that's, that's another opportunity there, because they, you know, they're, that, you look at that larger triangle piece there, kind of, I'm here in the lower right-hand corner, and then you see the piece just south of that. I think combined, you're looking at roughly almost 50 acres.
And that's one owner, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
That's one owner, isn't it?
Uh, no, that's two.
Two owners.
Two owners.
One of them's the old airstrip, isn't it? Or maybe, you may not know it, but I think, I think the one, I think the one is the old airstrip.
It may be, but, you know, looking at that and then putting this map together, that to me is, is the first opportunity there, so.
And then maybe look at how those lands could be connected as well in the future.
Right, absolutely.
Paul, do you have a question that you wanted to ask?
Yeah, if it's a ques, I mean, make it leave before you come on.
If this is to go on, talking about economic development and solving some problems.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Paul Edgar, Oregon City. I'm very concerned equally about economic development in industrial lands and creating jobs locally. But one of the things we really have to get a handle on soon is a kind of understanding of why so many developers come into Oregon City and find our community unacceptable or there's a perception that we're not ready to do business, okay? And it has to be cold turkey. It has to be independent. We just have to face the facts and try to figure out what we're doing or what we are not doing that we need to understand about making our city ready to go. Being smart, we need to create jobs. And right now, there's a perception we are not smart and we're not ready. They perceive that there's too much risk in, in Oregon City. Decision-ready type lands are not, have too many more years added to them. That's, we just can't continue with doing that. We need to start looking really further ahead. We, as an example, we have the lands of past Kanema that have capabilities. We have a South End Road concept plan being developed with a lot of great lands that are flat and capable of industrially be developed. And if Butel Road was extended down to Highway 99, where we could eliminate the weight restriction on South End Road from coming up from Kanema, or the curls at the other end where it connects back with 99 going towards Canby, we could have an opportunity to create hundreds of acres potentially up on the plateau right there that could be beautiful industrial lands, and then a road connecting down to, to railroads and other heavy access areas right on 99 below, and this comes, connects right up. But thinking through these things, I've talked to other people and developers about, about Beaver Creek Road, and nine out of 10 that have looked at it said it's not industrial land. So to find the one in 10 that thinks that it is, fine, we got to. We gotta continue to do it because we owe it to jobs. And I agree with Doug in the sense that we have this university or a college right next door, and it's...
And a high school.
And there's some synergy there. But the big thing is trying to understand why people look at Oregon City and, and look at us as a risk, and they don't want to take the risk. And I think we need to fund independently, just getting a handle on it because we just gotta do it. Thank you.
I think, I think one of the reasons it's perceived as a risk is probably some of the things that occurred in the last two or three years in Oregon City. But the point is that I don't, I don't see how the South End area is better for industrial development than the Beaver Creek area is. I think transportation problems there are far more extreme than we've got. We've got an expressway that goes right up to it, so.
And it's not annexed in, correct?
It's not. It's just going through a concept plan. Just going through a concept plan. We got the Beaver Creek.
It's in advance.
Yeah. In any case, we'll go on to the next item. And that is our water rate study.
All right. So here we are again, as promised, over your work session. We've got one more on the schedule as well, so I look forward to seeing us next month as well. Alita Froman Goodrich is going to man the station here and present some of this for us tonight. John Gilarducci, you remember, he's with FCS Group, and he will present the financial piece of tonight's presentation. Eli's got the smorgasbord of pipes over there. Welcome to preview again. And of course, I'm John Lewis. So we're here to present the Oregon City water rate issues and water rates and talk a little bit about new charter amendments. So the other people I would like to acknowledge is we've got several of our water rate advisory group in the audience. So I appreciate all of them for showing. There's several here tonight. And they've also received a fair amount of email and things. But what they haven't necessarily seen is, some of what we're presenting tonight is repeat, just for the viewing audience, to make sure we get the word out and it's clearly understood what we're talking about. So some of this you'll have heard, other you won't. We have not been able to put together a meeting with the water rate advisory group since the last time we met here with you and met with them. So that's another thing that we'll show you when we're planning to meet with them. So maybe some new information for you folks as well. So we've got a pretty good agenda. We're going to cover a couple, the new things will be kind of some of the public opinion research, some information that we're doing for public outreach. We're going to hit pretty hard on some of the services that we provide now and some of the needs that we feel like we have now. We want to make sure you hear that and it's emphasized, I guess, because we feel that's pretty important. That's essentially our job is to make sure you're informed about the needs of the system. So the next slides here, I'm just going to go ahead and read because I think it might help the listening audience. But this is kind of the history about why we're here today. So city leaders decided to develop several important and expensive water system improvements, could not be deferred any longer, and took action in early 1990s to complete these projects. The city borrowed money to pay for the water system improvements and issued water revenue bonds in 1991, 93, and 95, 94, sorry. Those rates, rates rose rapidly in 1994 to pay back bonds and funded completion of the water system improvements. In 1996, voters troubled about water rate increases voted on city charter amendment language. And in 1996, amended, the amendment required water rates to return to 1994 levels and restricted city commission authority to increase water rates to no more than 3% per year without a vote of the people, even in a water emergency. In 1996, bondholders sued the city to prevent the amendment provisions from coming into effect until the city paid back the bond debt. In 1997, federal court issued its decision that water rates could not be rolled back to 1994 levels until existing bonds were paid off. The bonds will be repaid in 2014, triggering rollback provisions to take effect. Near 2014, rolling back water rates to 20 years to 1994 levels will eliminate the capital maintenance replacement program we have, including pipe replacements and reduce ongoing operational services. City cannot provide reliable drinking water service in 2014 at 1994 rates. Alita's going to talk about this slide.
Yes, the question, just Alita. On that previous one, I have people asking me about this, and I want to make sure that I'm giving them proper information. When we say we can't provide reliable drinking water service in 2014 at 1994 rates, if we had 1994 rates, would we even be able to buy the water that we need?
You mean from the South Fork Water Board?
Well, from whoever, yeah. Whatever our contract would call for. But would we be able to afford the water itself?
Yes.
Okay. But that's all, basically?
Well, we would be able to afford that and reduced level of day-to-day services.
Thank you.
Okay. One of our goals for our public outreach campaign is to get a real good handle on what the public opinion is. We are going to utilize a couple of different tools during the month of October. On October 18th and October 19th, we're going to have a telephone poll survey performed. Approximately 200 participants will work with our surveyor and discuss for about 10 minutes various questions about our water system and what they know about it, as well as some of the information that we just presented about the history, the rollback, and the city charter amendment. There will be an online survey that will also be conducted just after the telephone poll. That will be conducted from October 20th through November 5th. And people that want to go online and answer the same questions that were presented in the telephone poll will be able to do that. The online survey is a way to broaden the participation with the telephone poll. It usually takes, we're told, about 400 telephone calls to get about 200 participants to actually work through the survey and answer the questions. And the, conducting the surveys does really expand our public outreach campaign to get out to the general public in ways that we're not able to do with our publications and distributions of informational pamphlets and flyers. We have DHM as, DHM Research as the company that will be doing the two different surveys, the telephone poll as well as the online survey. They do have 30 years of experience in surveys of this type. They will be conducting this, as I said, starting October 18th, doing random phone calls for the telephone poll. And they do have an expertise in water resources and funding measures.
So again, today, we really want to reemphasize these bullet items here. This is just kind of sharing with you what the average monthly rate is for a single-family resident. But we really want to emphasize and give you details that maybe you know, but maybe you don't. And hopefully, the viewing audience will learn something here as well. We just think that a lot of these things go unnoticed and are taken for granted. So for instance, our treated drinking water, we treat surface water runoff, basically. So the water that runs down Clackamas River is surface water runoff, a little different in that it's kind of, it's not a protected source. Sometimes people compare us to Portland, which has got the Bull Run watershed, or others that have water wells or aquifers. We treat Clackamas River water, which is a very good source, don't get me wrong. But from that, we have to pump that water to the treatment plant, which is, mixes that river water with a product called alum that gets then mixed real well and then put in some basins that basically, with that additive, kind of, there's conglomeration that happens with any solids that are floating in that water. And then it settles out in the sedimentation basin. And then there's still a filtration process. And then we actually do add a little chlorine for disinfection. And then we send that water to covered reservoirs. The city doesn't have any open reservoirs. So that may be another point of contention because Portland does have uncovered reservoirs. So all of our reservoirs are covered. So that's kind of how we get our water and how it's managed between the river and our, and our distribution system. So this, I'm going to go through these slowly. I know it may feel a little painful, but I think it's important. So our meter reading and meter replacement program, we've got somewhere around 10,500 meters. And we manually read those meters. We really have, we have a handful of automated meter readers where the meter reader can walk up to them and read those. But for the most part, we manually read those. We don't, there are agencies that can do that electronically. But again, we don't have those, that type of meters. The meters we do have, we replace on a limited basis. Those meters are ours. We own those meters. And when they fail or start leaking, we replace those out of our operations or capital funds. There's one, one big pot of money. So a lot of people don't know that. But that's another piece of the system that we own and responsible for maintaining.
Now, the units that we're putting in, are they electronic that you can just drive by and read?
They're not.
They're not?
They're not. There's some capital expenses in going to automated meter reading. And we do have some, but they're mostly for our larger commercial meters. Service line replacements, there's a small difference here between the number of service lines we have and the number of meters. We've, we're understanding most of that difference is related to those customers that have multiple meters or other places where we've got meters, but we're not necessarily billing out those rates. So that's why we've got the difference there. So city, city is responsible for replacing those service lines. That's a fairly big obligation. So we've been talking about 154 miles of pipe. That does not include the service line. So keep that in mind as well. That's, that's a decent sized liability. Our fire hydrant and water valve maintenance programs, we maintain roughly 20% of those per year. We usually do that when we're doing our flushing program. We work with the fire district to do some servicing of fire hydrants and flushing of fire hydrants. And then when we're flushing our lines, trying to keep the, you know, water quality high. And we, at the same time, are checking valves to make sure they're, they're open and working. And so that's how we usually maintain our hydrants and our valves.
So we own our own hydrants and it is not, they weren't transferred to Clackamas Fire District, one?
We own the hydrants. We own the, responsible for those replacements.
We maintain them.
That's right. Yeah, the fire district is just part of their service that they provide when they come in. And they don't hit a lot. We're probably, we probably do more of that than they do, but we coordinate with them and make sure we're not covered in the same area twice. Our leak detection, we hire, that's a professional service provider that comes in, and they provide leak detection services on about a third of our water system every year. And in addition to that third, we also have certain lines that we test every year. Those lines that are subject to landslide or other concerns that we might have about their performance, we'll, we'll do leak detection on those. And I just will add, when we find leaks out of that service or any, any leaks that we find, we respond to those as quickly as we can so that we can stop that leak. Our annual water line replacements by water division, that's Eli's crew. They do a lot of water main, or I would say a fair amount of water main replacement for the size of our crew. We've got a small crew. We pick places where there's not a lot of traffic control, maybe, where we can come into a site and maybe do some work. And if we get called away, we can leave the site with, you know, just some, maybe plating over those holes that we've got dug up or covering them back in. So we pick old water lines that are maybe a little bit more off the beaten path. Anything that's more obvious to you that maybe you've seen, like on Main Street, for instance, we would use a contractor to do that work. I think we're, because of the way we have to kind of come and go and come and go, we're efficient in that, but probably not as efficient as contract employees or contractor-built water lines. Our emergency response and repairs, that's a 24-hour-a-day service. We assign someone on call. If we get a call about a water main break or any kind of utility break that we are responsible for, we respond to that. But at the same time, it's very expensive. So the more old lines we have, the more service emergency response and repairs that we're going to have to make. Pump station, reservoir maintenance and inspection, we've got five of those. We do, we do routine checks on all those facilities. Pump station's a little bit more than the reservoirs, but we're still looking at those often. Pressure-reducing valves, we have 17.
I'm going to stop you on seven, just for a moment. A few years back, there was concerns with the Wevo's Mountain View because it serves as a storage unit for West Lynn as well. Now, my understanding, did South Fork take responsibility for that reservoir? Apparently not, because we.
It's a city reservoir. Yeah, it's a city reservoir, city pump station.
Okay.
So they fill it, and they have a pipeline that comes to that site that fills that. And that's South Fork's responsibility. Although it's, when I say it's South Fork's responsibility, the rate pairs from Oregon City and West Lynn contribute to those facilities.
Right.
Okay.
The question I have here is the concern was it was our reservoir and we weren't really getting reimbursed for West Lynn's use. And I thought that was resolved in some fashion, but maybe it was not.
Oh, boy. They have their own reservoirs as well, but there's not a mechanism for them to reimburse us, as far as I know.
They have their own reservoirs, but we don't use them. But they do use ours effectively.
True, but they could get water service with, if our reservoir was empty as well. It does help, because we're connected, it helps balance the pressure zones. But they get most of their water through the Division Street Pump Station, which is a South Fork Water Board pump station. So really, from the treatment plant down to the Division Street Pump Station, in theory, you could close the valve right there and they couldn't use Mountain View. Now, they, they use it in a sense that in a fire flow situation, they would probably draw more than the treatment plant could respond. So I think that's fairly accurate. Eli, can you give me a yes or a no? Okay, that's a good. I didn't lie or anything there, right? Keep me honest.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So pressure-reducing valves, they're a specialty valve. As, I'm assuming some of you know, you know, water's like a large water column, just like you mentioned. The high points are where your reservoirs are, the low points are where your high pressure typically is. Because of the city and the fact that we have so many levels, we have 17 of these pressure valve stations. So each level of the city is kind of isolated by one of these pressure valves. And when those fail, you'll see spikes. We've seen that happen before. Some of you may remember that. And when they spike, you'll see water heaters and pipelines and service lines, and you'll see problems in that neighborhood. So we, I hope, I hope we never see one of those spike. And because of that, we do routine inspections of those. We go to those pressure-reducing valves monthly, and we have them inspected every five years by, by an expert in that. And if we find any problems with that, we call that expert in and, you know, he makes the repairs to those. They're a specialized valve. They're a very important part of our system. And they're, they're complex and they're costly to replace.
Do the individual, I mean, I know I've got a pressure control on my side of the meter. Is that, is that required of residents or not?
In some places in the city, it is a requirement. In other places, it's a good idea, but not a requirement. It's, you know, pressure fluctuations in water distribution systems, it can happen, especially, especially, you know, when you've got a city that's got 17 different pressure-reducing valves. So it's a great idea. But in some neighborhoods like yours, the water pressures are really pretty high. So we require the property owner to have their own single, you know, small diameter pressure-reducing valve in addition to ours. Okay. You know, we do some engineering in-house. We manage our system, obviously, in-house. But some engineering we do in-house, some we contract out. We think that's an efficient use of our funding, and we think that's a smart way to get work done. So we do a fair amount of that. Tools, equipment, and vehicles, how many of you think we're paying less for tools, equipment, and vehicles these days? It's not likely to be the case. And I can tell you it's not. The water department recently contributed to one of our larger vectors, which has typically been used by the wastewater and stormwater crew. But with the efficiencies in doing some of the vacuum excavation that you might do through a small hole do through a small hole to get to a problem, uh, they've contributed to that particular vehicle. But between that, those kind of vehicles, you know, our dump trucks and our service, our service trucks, just the, the kinds of, um, equipment that we put with regard to the tool beds and the, we use hoists and we're reducing our, our back injuries because we have to lift some of these heavy water meter boxes. You know, some of that's, uh, when you add all that stuff together for a service truck, it's as much as you might expect to spend for a, a standard pickup truck. So, um, I would tell you that our tools, equipment and vehicle costs are high. SCADA, which is, um, uh, computer supervisory control and data acquisition, we went, we converted to that. I'm thinking it's about six years ago. It's been wonderful. Where we communicate with our pump stations and our pressure reducing valves via radio. And, um, it's a very robust system compared to what we had before. When you get called, it'll actually tell you what system is being a problem or having a problem. It's still not perfect. It's not, it's not the most robust system. And in our capital dollars and our operations dollars, we don't have a lot of funding programmed in here to even upgrade that further, to provide more redundant service. So, I guess my message there is, is out of all these things, we're not, um, we're probably not where we'd want to be. I think if we got a report card, we'd probably get a solid B. Okay? There's several other programs here that I think are important or, you know, um, backflow prevention. If you've got a, if you've got an irrigation system on your property, you're required to have a backflow. You're required to have it tested. A lot of people dis, are displeased with that program because it, you know, it requires you to spend some dollars to have that system tested. But it's important for our drinking water quality. So, we, we require that. That's just, that's a regulatory program that we're, we're required by the state to have. Our water flushing program I mentioned before, we probably do 20% of the system a year. We do special, um, water quality testing and those requirements are always, um, increasing. There's the, whether it be the lab rates or the types of requirements that we're required to have, it's costly. So, um, again, the services that we provide are, again, I think overlooked or maybe taken for granted, but it, uh, it's, 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 those, these are industry standard practices that we think we're doing on a very efficient level. And we don't have a lot of money programmed into our capital program to enhance these services. So, keep that in mind when we're talking about capital maintenance, which is the next slide. So, um, you've seen these numbers before. We've got lots of pipe. We've got some numbers figured into our analysis that, uh, include a life of 75 years, which would, uh, if, if we were, um, continued with our replacement program, we'd see two miles of pipeline replaced each year. Uh, we've got a cost today for pipeline replacement of $217 a foot. And I, you know, that's a lot of money when you think about water line pipes. So, as I started to think about that, you know, there's, I kept thinking, well, what if we reduce that? Wouldn't that reduce our obligation? And it might. And that might be where we end up is taking a closer, uh, not, I don't think we can necessarily take a closer look at that, but I don't know. That's one of those areas where, you know, maybe you make a different assumption and you come up with a little different answer. But I would say this about capital, pipeline replacements in Oregon City. The areas that we're talking about aren't necessarily in newer parts of town. We're talking about the older parts of town where the topography in Park Place and the McLaughlin neighborhood and maybe even the Rivercrest neighborhood has some slope to it. And when we see, you know, pipe damage or breaks in those neighborhoods, you know, it's, it's not just a little area that gets flooded out and kind of the water level raises and then seeps into the ground. It usually comes gushing out of the ground and washing down whatever drainage path it chooses. Sometimes that's, um, that creates property damage. Sometimes it, it doesn't. So, keep, keep that in mind. Those are the neighborhoods where we really need to kind of focus some of our, um, our public improvements.
Is that, is that the cost of, of just, of the pipe or also the pipe and labor?
That's a total cost.
That's a total cost.
That would be a cost of pipe, labor, you know, those meters we've been talking about that need to be replaced, those service lines that need, you know, so every mile of pipe has, you know, several hundred feet of service line associated with it too. And so, that's kind of a, a really general number, but I recognize it's a big number. But at the same time, historic neighborhoods, you know, we're in the McLaughlin and the Kenema neighborhood. The Kenema neighborhood, when we start working on water lines, we've got to think about, you know, the neighborhood concerns, but also the archaeological concerns and the historic significant of those areas. Those just, you know, they're, they're not, uh, it's not barren land like a developer might take and just open trench and build them. You know, we've got surfaces to restore. The expectations are becoming higher and higher on our ability to restore surfaces. What we did in Ogden, you know, we did that work. We put a, a smaller trench patch on it and we, we just recently paved Ogden. So, that's becoming kind of the standard that we're trying to meet and we're expected to meet. Um, public involvement is bigger than it ever used to be. That's a cost. There's a cost associated with that. Um, accelerated schedules. People don't less, necessarily like their water shut down for long periods of time. They want, they want that to, to happen in, you know, a few hours, not a few days. That didn't used to be the case. So, I just, um, I, I just want to emphasize that I don't, we've, you know, looking at the number and thinking about how do we scrutinize that, there, you can scrutinize it. Anybody's, you know, gonna suggest, why don't you use a little lower number, you know, maybe you should use a little higher number. I think it's a good number for our planning purposes. So, uh, one of the things that, um, sometimes you, as a manager of a water system, you, you don't like to hit the newspaper or the front page, uh, of the newspaper or the, you don't like to have the, the media there on your site to look at water main breaks. Uh, but they happen and we've been pretty good about keeping that stuff, um, under wraps. And I always thought that was the right thing to do.
(laughing).
I do, you know, I mean, who wants to have the, the media guy there going, when are you gonna fix this water line and, you know, why did it break? But, um, West Lynn's had a little of exposure to that. And, you know, it's, the, now, they're looking at water rates too, by the way. And now they're, they're, they're actually using some of that news to their advantage. We don't have those news stories to tell, but we've had a lot of instances where we've had those, those kind of situations. And, um, you know, maybe if we had more news stories like that, the overall public would know a little bit more about how.
We get, we get good coverage on our sewers though.
That's true.
(laughing).
We don't, yeah. We'll talk about sewer rates next year, huh?
(laughing).
Um, so, this is, this is an Oregon City picture here and it's just an example of the kinds of equipment and the kind of response that happens. Sometimes this happens during the, you know, Monday morning when everybody's fresh. Usually it happens on Friday afternoon just before a holiday or at, you know, 2:00 AM in the morning. And when those things happen, you see your cost per foot go from two, $217 a foot to something much greater. And, um, so, and you lose the productivity, you know, assuming that it's happening during your regular workday, you lose that productivity that the crews would otherwise be doing, working on a main break like this. So, again, the emphasis is on, if we could get to those, you know, problematic pipelines before they start bursting, um, we can do that more efficiently and, um,
Do you know?
And avoid those big costs.
The, the cost difference between, like you're saying, $217 a foot, if it's a break like that, what does it cost to come in and do just an emergency repair, do you know, a foot?
Well, it depends on the damages that results from the break. We've seen,
Right.
We've seen water main breaks that, uh, heave, you know, 400 feet of pavement in all directions. You know, we've seen those kind of breaks. We've, uh, there's other ones where, to be quite honest with you, it starts bubbling out. Somebody calls us, we get there, it's during the business day, uh, we shut the line down, we dig down with our vector excavator, fix it, put a Band-Aid on it. And, you know, it's not that expensive. In fact, we're probably not, we're really not even replacing any pipeline. But, um, so we're left with a, a pipeline that we know has got troubles, yet we're able to Band-Aid it and keep it from leaking.
But I would imagine most emergency repairs would be quite a bit more money than your planned repairs.
Right. Yeah, this one here, for instance, we had to take out several sections of pipe and, you know, that's, you know, for one, even though you're putting in that little bit of pipe, when we actually come in to replace this project, we'll, we'll redo all that piece. So, we have one continuous, you know, complete section of pipe. So, it's, sometimes it feels like kind of a waste on, on those short repairs.
And then do you have to repave the road or you just patch it as best you can?
We, we, we patch a lot of these. Um, depends. As you know, we just passed, passed a new standard for street repairs. If that happens out in a newly paved street, we're gonna have to take a look at a much more robust repair. This one here was, looks like it was in a, a pretty rough section of town that, uh, rough, rough section of pavement. So, not so much. We don't have any rough sections of town.
(laughing).
I think I made this point before, um, but I'll make it again. We, we've got a, um, funded street maintenance utility system. And, uh, we put this five-year plan together. When we put that five-year plan together, we tried to look as, as, based on the information that we had, based on histories that Eli had taken of repairs, we said, there are some streets here that we're recommending that have, um, pavement needs to them. But, and if they have water line needs underneath them as well, then if we knew they were, you know, gonna be within the first five years, we deferred those. But anything after those five years, we thought, well, you know, the pavement will be five years older then. That, that's probably gonna be a reasonable time to open that street up if we have to go in and repair the main, the, the water main. But even the, the, within this five-year plan, there's, there's water system needs in there that, um, are beyond our ability to fund at our current rate. And so, we're looking at kind of, well, how do we, how do we deal with that? Things like 15th Street, things like, um, oh, I'm drawing a blank. You got a map right here. Um, out near Gaffney Lane, um, Clermont, you know, the, those aren't even old sections, but yet we know we've got water main breaks out there and we know we need to fix the pavement as well. So, we'd like to be able to take those on in a way that we could get the water main done, maybe combine some of that work with some street maintenance work and be even more efficient on how we finish those projects. But we won't be able to do that without, um, capital funding. I think Alita gets the next slide.
So, um, city goals have been set in, um, departments, the city commission. Um, our water division has goals. Um, they have daily goals and annual goals. Uh, they, one of their goals is to, um, meet state and federal regulatory standards for their public drinking water. Um, that is mandated and, um, right now, we're doing a very good job at it. Um, and the other, um, part of that is, um, to deliver, um, treated drinking water. So, to have the cash flow, um, to pay South Fork Water Board to deliver that, um, on a daily basis. Providing operational services for, um, emergency conditions 24/7, uh, so that the public can call, um, at any, um, hour of the day or night and, uh, get water service, um, during emergency situations. Minimize the water quality complaints. Um, we do have a water quality coordinator that, uh, works, um, on, uh, calling back citizens, um, as soon as they report. She has a very good, um, uh, calling system to get back, um, and make sure she addresses any water quality complaints, um, and, uh, works through those as needed, even visiting the, um, citizen if necessary. Uh, ensuring that the community health and public safety, um, uh, is being met through the compliance of our Safe Drinking Water Act, um, requirements. And providing uninterrupted service, um, to all the customers and maintaining our fire flow protection, um, and reserves up in our reservoirs so that we would have fire flow on a continuous basis if there, um, was a fire that needed to be, um, put out. Uh, and one of, um, the goals for this year, um, we just, uh, did adopt a water master plan and, um, the, the water division would like to implement, uh, the capital improvement program that, um, is recommended in that water master plan. Uh, the city commission, um, 2012 goals, um, uh, for the year also build on, um, uh, some of our, um, water, uh, goals as well. Um, building a sustainable future, implementing economic development strategy and maintaining an environment for success, addressing critical facility needs, enhancing the livability of the community, seeking opportunities to maintain communications with citizens and facilitate citizen participation. Um, we do have an advisory group that we're working with on the water rate study, um, maintaining fiscal health and long-term stability. So, uh, with that, we've, we've tried to, um, work with these goals, um, in the water rate study and, um, and consider these as we're working through it. With that, um, we'll have John Giller Ducci start his portion
Thanks, Alita. Um, well, mo, most of the financial discussion, uh, is really framed by the issues of the charter and, uh, um, the rollback that, that's already been touched on. This would be a lot easier if you could just act and do what needed to be done, um, obviously. But there are limitations that, that the current charter, um, imposes. One of them is the rate rollback. Uh, absent action and a public vote, the way we've interpreted this and, and I, I know you have as well, there'll be a, a rollback to 1994 levels plus 3% increases from, uh, from that date. It also comes with a public vote requirement to issue any debt, even revenue bond debt for the water service. So, going forward, that's a, that's a, uh, an additional limitation. The date the rollback would occur, October 15th, 2014. Um, it would be effective on November 1st. So, part of it would occur in fiscal year 2014 and part of it would occur in fiscal year 2015. No, 15 and 16, excuse me. Uh, we've calculated that the estimated revenue loss to be about 27% of rate revenues, um, to the water utility. This would be catastrophic to the water utility by, by any measure. Um, depending on how services were prioritized, the city would be unable to fund current operations, let alone capital of any kind if the rollback were to occur. So, we've developed, um, as a, as a possible answer to that, an example that would achieve city goals, although again, it would require a public vote of some kind, and generate sufficient revenues by 2018, um, to fund drinking water treatment, operations, and then capital as laid out in the adopted water master plan. Um, the way that we have approached this, what we'll call a phasing scenario, is by phasing the capital. So, we're not expecting that the city would fully fund capital as identified in the water master plan, but would phase into that over a period of years up to 2018. And by that time, then it would be, be able to fully fund pipe replacement and capital at the $2.3 million level that John, uh, mentioned earlier. It would also, and we've, we've cherry picked a couple of the city commission goals from the previous slide, um, go a long way, at least for the water utility, of meeting city goals of a sustainable future. Um, that is providing clean, uninterrupted water, um, addressing critical water facility needs in this case, enhancing the livability of the community and maintaining the fiscal health of the water service. So, the phasing example looks like this. It would require an initial increase of 17% in fiscal year 2014, followed by a 12% increase, two successive 9% increases, a 7% increase and then a series after that, 5%. And, uh, the way that we've. the way that we've, we've laid this out, it's possible that lower than 5% increases would sustain the utility after you get over that initial hump of five years. On the graph, you'll, you'll note there, the dark green portion at the bottom of each of the stacked bars is the, is the treatment, or, yeah, water treatment cost. The lighter green is the remaining operating budget. Existing debt service is the purple portion there. The light blue is the, is the Public Works Center, and, which would be constructed in 2021 by this, by this approach. And then you see capital, which would include pipe replacement, and within the same funding level, the specific master plan, projects that were identified in the master plan as necessary. So you'll see, as a result of the phasing, total capital needs exceeding rate revenue in those early years. You're able to address those later in the period. This next graph shows the cumulative unfunded capital liability by this approach. So you'll see, this is, this is sort of the, it's the sum as you go of that unfunded blue portion from the previous graph. And it reaches a maximum of a little over $5 million in 2021. By 2022, you're making headway on it now, because you've gotten over the hump, and at the 5% level, you're able to address that and, and start to move the unfunded capital down, such that it is, there is no cumulative liability by 2024 under this approach. The impact on bills would look something like this. If, if that pale row that says averag, the first one that says average monthly bill, that is the, the treatment and operations portion of the monthly bill. So, for fiscal year 2013, that would be $27.40. That assumes a 3% increase, as is expected. And then the capital portion is the next lighter row down below. So of, of the, of the total average monthly bill, 27.40 is operations, including treatment. And then 501 would be the capital portion of that average bill. And you can see the impact of needed capital as you move out year to year, using this graphic. By fiscal year 2018, the total of the two components is, is just under $54. It's actually, it's up to 54, it's 53.99, those are rounded, as an average monthly water bill. We'll look at some comparables in the area, and you'll see that that's still lower than some current rates in the area. We also, when we were here, talking with you last time, we talked about a scenario in which what is presented to the voters might be a, a maximum of 5% per year increase instead of 3%. So we ran that for you. And as you can see, you're generally able to meet operating costs under that approach, and some capital. The catch is this, that as you track, again, the cumulative capital liability, by the end of 2022, that, that unfunded capital is between 25 and 30 million dollars. So-
This is essentially the addition of the blue areas above your line.
That's right. Yeah. And, and so what, you know, I guess, when I look at this, what I see is, is at the, is at the steadier, lower level, you're not able to get over that hump of needed capital, and so it just accumulates. And, and the real risk is that you will be left with emergencies to respond to, and, and things at which you have less control over the cost, as I know you, as I know you So, moving forward, some points that I think are important to, to consider, sort of in the, in the bigger picture, and looking at, at utilities in general, and, and utility funding in general. As you know, utilities generally don't require public votes on rates, and there are some, there are some really good reasons why they, why they don't. For one thing, the provision of water is, is a vital, health-related public service. You need people who are experts, or you, you need expertise to help you assess problems and make recommendations about what the best things are to do, and those, that doesn't necessarily fit going out to a, a public vote. City needs a fiscally healthy water service in order to respond to regulatory requirements that, that face you already, but there may be more in the future. Emergency repairs, at times urgent capital projects, and John talked about coordinating with street projects, the ability to, to get the biggest bang for your buck using street money as well, and coordinating the two utilities. Public votes, and again, I recognize I'm not telling you anything you don't know here, but public votes are, are time-consuming and costly. They create risk around issues which, at times, are health and safety issues. There are, the, the public has many opportunities to weigh in. They do that through the budget process, through the public hearings on rate increases, public outreach conducted through the master planning process, which you've just been through. As a second major item, imposed rate ceilings, such as you will face, can impact your credit rating. If you're able to issue debt with statutory, or with, with set ceilings, it can certainly impact the cost of that debt and the terms that you're able to get, because the risk is higher when the bond market looks at Oregon City as a credit risk, because you can't raise rates as needed to make your debt service payments. So, so they can lead to the deferral of key maintenance and capital needs. And I think that Wes Lynn's done a, a really fine job in light of their, they have a 5% limit as a result of, of an action about the same time as was taken in Oregon City.
They don't have a rollback, though?
No, because they, I, I think they didn't have debt outstanding at the time, so they had their ceiling imposed from that point on, and they've been subject to a 5% maximum ceiling, and it's led to some of the issues that they have now with deferred maintenance and deferred capital. So, bottom line, it can, those types of ceilings can reduce your flexibility. You know, a utility like the water utility is supposed to be operated as a, a, a separate, standalone enterprise, and of course, it, it reduces your flexibility to operate that So that's what I've got.
Ready for comments or questions, or more, you have more than that?
I think there's a few more.
Okay.
Okay, looking at our, our drinking water business, today, we have water rates to, to raise the revenue we needed to provide the product that we have. And, single families today are, are paying on average about $31.45 on a monthly basis, and that provides about 6,000 gallons of treated drinking water, which is about a dollar five per day for 200 gallons, and that's about average, what is used for typically a single-family resident. And in the phasing example that John just went through, in year 2018, the single-family resident would pay approximately $53.99 monthly for the same 6,000 gallons, about a dollar eighty per day.
This is assuming what kind of rate increase is proposed?
Yes, per the phasing example with the rate increases.
First one and the two.
And in addition, they would be getting for that $53.99 a month, the reinvestment into the water system, with the pipeline replacements and capital improvement program being fully funded at, in 2018. Just comparing it to bottled drinking water, we just thought it was interesting to just look at that, when people are going out and buying their bottled water. In the, the food stores, on average, we were finding about a dollar eighty buys two gallons of bottled drinking water. And the city's drinking water for a dollar eighty today buys about 340 gallons of city treated drinking water that's in compliance with all of the mandatory federal and state regulations. And just, I know you've seen this slide before, but we've added to it, finding out more about our peer communities in the area. This is the approximate average monthly 2012, single-family resident billings. And out of the cities that we did have in our listing, we're finding out that West Lynn's, Salem, Hillsborough, and Lake Oswego are expected to have rate increases in the near term. Oregon Cities is somewhat in the middle today, out of these particular cities. And in 2018, again, with the, the rate example that John presented, we would be right about at $53.99, just under Portland's, in five or so years, so. And we brought these proposed objectives up for the new city charter amendment at the last work session, and, you know, some of these were brought together from what we heard from community stakeholders. John Lewis and I have been doing some community neighborhood association presentations, and, and then we have our water rate advisory work group that has had two meetings. We're expecting a third meeting that is scheduled on October 30th, and then the water rates technical team. And just briefly going through those again, removing and replacing outdated provisions of the 1996 charter amendment, maintaining uninterrupted service to Oregon Cities' customers, retaining the capacity to invest timely in capital improvements to the community's water system, preserve Oregon Cities' access to the lowest possible borrowing cost by limiting risk to lenders, retain a measure of city accountability to water customers over future water rate increases, clearly stating and explaining any proposed charter amendment language to voters, so that they understand what we are, what is being presented to them. Proposing a charter amendment that enjoys good prospects for voter support, which is a very important objective. Minimizing uninterupted, I'm sorry, unintended consequences of the charter amendment provisions, similar to what we're seeing today. All of the, why we're here today are unintended consequences of the, the previous charter amendment. And also themes for the new city charter amendment, trying to meet city goals, again, looking at what John Lewis and John Giller Ducci presented for generating sufficient revenues to sustain and fund the operations and capital assets of the city's water system, including the drinking water treatment that's delivered from South Fork Water Board, the operational services that the city's Public Works of Water Division provides, and the capital maintenance and replacement programs to reinvest in, in the water system as adopted in the 2012 water master plan. So we are, you know, have put together a public outreach campaign, and we have implemented it. We have been giving presentations to, at CIC meetings, at the Chamber of Commerce meeting with their economic group, neighborhood meetings. We also are looking at association meetings, Kiwanis Club, and Rotary Club, Lions Club, and, and looking towards educational institutions that we could also provide presentations. We are, we do have a website that will actively update and provide information as we're presenting it, as well as any new activities for the water rate study. We are going out to, we, hot off the press, we have a publication, our fact sheet, that we put together, that I think you've all seen, it's What You Should Know About Oregon Cities' Water. And as, we're all excited about the Arch Bridge Celebration that's gonna be on October 12th through the 14th. The Clackamas Review, Oregon City News, Westland Tidings are putting together, have put together and published this insert that will be out tomorrow. And in the center of it, we do have our fact sheet inserted in there, so that we can reach-
The middle fold.
Yeah, the middle fold. So, we're hoping to reach the 5,000 people that will be coming down to the Arch Bridge Celebration each day. And, and then we are putting information in our trail news, utility bill inserts, and just general distribution of the fact sheet by various businesses and citizens. And the media strategy, we are looking at other ways to publicize the outreach effort. We are going to have our online web survey and telephone poll conducted this month. And we do have some upcoming public hearings that, that we will be scheduling, and then as the city commission goes forward with approving a measure, there will be a different type of public outreach that will have to take place with the rules that apply for ballot measures, and that everything is education only, and just the facts. So with that, John Lewis will go over the next steps that we have.
Right, so a lot, a lot of what we presented tonight feels a little bit new. We still want to go over this kind of information, and hopefully we'll have our phone survey information with the water rate advisory group at our next meeting. We've heard from, we've heard a variety of things about water rates, and we recognize the fact that there's a desire to see rates low. We, we know, we recognize that that's what we might expect to hear from most. But we also feel like it's our job to give you as much information that we can, to emphasize why we also think our current system and our, yeah, our current system is, is important and needs to be updated. So, anyway, but in, on the 13th, we'll be back here. At that time, we'll be talking a lot more about specific charter language. We, we've asked Bill Kabeisman to watch this meeting via, the video, so that he can kinda hear what comes of this meeting. And so, next, next meeting would be, you know, real suggestions on charter language based on what we've heard tonight, based on what we hear from the water rate advisory group, what we hear from the community, and the survey in general. So, we're trying to call all this information together, and it's gonna come together kinda fast towards the end. And then with the idea of hitting public hearings on that, on, on that, on that- And then with the idea of hitting public hearings on that, on that potential charter language and hopefully have a resolution that would adopt a ballot title and ballot language. So that's all we have.
Can I ask a question? I understand that Milwaukee just had some significant increases in their water bills, but I didn't see them listed in any of the lists this time or the last time. Is there, I mean, I think that would be a good figure to show.
Yeah, offhand, I don't have that information, but we could find that out and include that in our list of communities.
My mother's telling me about it every week, so.
Thank you for that.
It's hard to, for me to visualize the charter language, but it almost seems like, first of all, you're going to do away with the rollback, and if you're going to have this variable rate, you're going to ask to have the rate, any kind of rate limits removed, or you're going to have a very complicated charter statement that's going to say 17% and so forth and so forth and so forth. I guess, I don't know how to phrase this, because I don't want to imply I don't understand the problem, I do. I appreciate your doing the 5%, which I think I requested. I guess I would have wanted to see it over a longer period than about a 10-year period, but the point is, I could see the accumulated, the accumulated amount would take, even if it ever went above the point where you got into a catch-up, it'd be, it'd be take a long time to do away with it. But I, I guess I would like to see some variable, excuse me, some other constant rates, because I don't think the public is going to accept the rollback and then no rate control. I mean, they feel they have no control. And, and I think talking about this variable rate that you're talking about, high at the beginning and eventually rolling down, you would never want to put that language in the charter because it's too complicated. So I guess I'd like to see some constant rate things that, where we don't meet the goals initially, but eventually we do get the catch-up point and we eventually catch up with it. And as opposed to not seeing any rates in it at all, because I think if you ask for rollback and no rates, I just, I don't think it's going to go anywhere personally.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. The variable rates, was that proposed to try to predict the maintenance that was going to be needed during those years, or why was it set to be variable like that?
Do a catch-up, I think.
The phasing, well, when we, when we first looked at it, it required, if we just let the financial model run, it shows us a significant one-year increase that seemed infeasible. So then we started, we just really started looking at how can we spread this out so that it's not so impactful in one year? And there's basically an infinite number of patterns we could use to get to the same place, and so there's no, there's really no magic to that, to that particular set, the 17, 12, 9, except that we were trying to get from here to there and spread those increases out a little bit and get, and provide enough that you could get some capital accomplished in the first few years. But I think that's a great question, sort of what constant percentage does work over time to get you there that doesn't look like that? And that's something we can do.
That makes more sense to people.
One curve, and, you know, we've curves, we've done a lot of curves, but I get that. One thing that I'm wondering about is if we, if we looked at a three, if we took where we needed to end in 2021 and brought a 3% back and then looked at what that rate increase would be. I don't remember, John, if you've looked at that particular scenario, but the idea would be a large rate increase, you know, would the city commission be interested in seeing, you know, the first year kind of a rate increase that might be 25%, and then a flatter 3%? Does that, or does that just, you're not interested in that either?
The thing, first of all, you're going to put in the charter as a variable rate then. And the other thing is that you're putting a higher percentage, we've got people, you know, everybody likes to talk about, well, how many lattes is a amount, and people are buying bottled water. A lot of people can't afford to buy bottled water. I mean, you're not, you're not talking about, a lot of the people just simply do not have the income to make those kinds of decisions in terms of whether they have a latte or instant coffee. I mean, people, a lot of people are just stuck with their instant coffee, and a lot of people are going to drink the tap water because they bought it already and they can't afford to buy anything else. So I don't, I don't like those kinds of statistics thrown out frankly, because yes, there are a lot of people who buy bottled water, but they don't probably represent the people who are going to be hurt worse by increase. And having it high at the beginning, we've got people that have lost jobs and when they've got them back, they're taking it at a far lower wage than they had before. So it's kind of a rough time to say we're going to front-load the increase. We're, I believe we're pulling out of recession, I really do, but it's a slow one and there are a lot of people that are still hurting and they're not going to get the jobs that they had before. And so, having something high in the front, I think, will be disastrous for us frankly. So, this might be...
Have we looked at, if you add all of these together and divide them out by nine years, it's about 8%? And is there much of a difference?
I guess I'd feel more comfortable with a longer horizon too, than the, up through 2022 or whatever it is, a bit of a longer.
Show it, show, so you can show it getting over the hump in terms of the capital.
Right, and how long does that take to do?
We'll do that.
Yeah. Have I had other members of the public? We got some?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Frank O'Donnell, I haven't seen this name for a long time. Do you want to come up?
I would actually be happy to defer to you.
No, no, it's been so long since I've heard you speak, I want you to come up.
Only in the hopes of here we cover some of the points, because three minutes is going to be a whirlwind presentation.
Can I make suggestions too? Can, can, can we leave the folks with the answers up at the table and have the other people come up with a different mic, because I think there are going to be questions.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Can we just play the 5%?
Can we have? Come on.
Do you have a microphone? Can we do the microphone?
Come up here.
Yeah, and then, and then maybe, maybe we just simply have our people coming up to just speak. Do you really want me to put you back a little bit lower?
Only because, Mr. Mayor, with the three minutes, I may not be able to cover the information I want to, and I think it does have value. I hope another side of those...
Okay, so, okay, we'll do that. We'll do that. But good to see you again. William Gifford, and then, well, one at a time, one mic here. William Gifford.
Hold it close.
Got to hold it close.
I can hold it close. Because this is a work session, not a city commission, I don't know how formal this is, so I'll be as formal as you need. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm William Gifford, I live in Oregon City. And I had a few comments and some questions. Comment regarding the outreach to the neighborhood associations, which has been very good. I did get a comment today at the Chamber's Government Economic Affairs Committee that some members that had heard the presentations did not feel that there was enough solicitation of input from the, from the audiences at those presentations, that there was more of a, here's a situation, here's the facts, and there you go, without saying, well, what do you think we ought to do, or looking for, looking for suggestions. That's just, that's just a comment on my part. Another comment was, I was surprised at John's comment earlier this evening that the operating funds and the capital funds are fungible?
What?
Is that, they're in one pot, I think that was the phrase that you used, that operating and capital funds are...
Treatment, everything's in one fund.
And treatment, everything's in one fund. Okay, that's fungible. That means you can move from one to the other, right? If you need to do it.
One fund.
One fund, got it, okay. I was wondering about the wording, if there is going to be a standard like a 5% or a 3%, whatever you come up with, I'm wondering if that could be phrased as a maximum. So a maximum of 5% or whatever. It's just a thought, and I haven't heard that expressed yet. It's, it's just been that number.
Is that 2-3% number?
On this particular slide, and I'm sorry, I don't have a pointer with me, I'd like to look specifically at the dark blue on the top there. And...
Alita, can you read that?
Yeah, I'm just, it's difficult for me to see, is that a constant number? It's difficult to see it when it's arranged like that. John?
It's actually not. There are, there are some specific projects that are identified in the master plan. One of them is the Mountain View Reservoir, which would, which would be constructed in 2021, 2022, under this particular schedule, schedule, yeah. So, but what we're doing is we're funding either 2.3 million in capital replacement, which is the pipeline replacement program, or master plan identified specific projects, whichever is greater. So we wanted to make sure that we're not adding the two together. The 2.3 million, the pipe replacement money, is available for other replacement-type projects. So where you see capital that's greater than 2.3 million, it's because you had specific projects identified in the master plan and scheduled for those years.
And perhaps it's too much detail, but I'm suggesting that since it just says on the legend below where it says master plan, pipeline replacement, there's, there's some other little things that are going on inside that blue thing that might be more clear to, to help make this more palatable, if people understood why that isn't a fixed rate. There's also not much mention about the fact that new development, for the most part, as I'm understanding it, is covered by SDCs, or that's the plan, and we're not mentioning that too much in here. And that's, that's another suggestion.
That's a good one. There is a separate, believe it or not, much more sizable list of projects which are identified as future projects in the master plan. Those are entirely SDC-funded, they do not appear in these numbers. In other words, we carve those out and says, said those will not impact the rates, and they're in the system development charge basis.
That would be a nice footnote. And my last comment was, was a bit of a surprise about the first time I've heard any of these presentations about the inability of citizens to vote on their water rates. And, and there were a number of reasons why, why, but basically it sounded as though it's a rather complicated issue, and it just makes me think that it's possible that, especially regarding some things, that citizens really aren't the most qualified to make detailed decisions on.
Frank, you still want to...
Are there others?
Is there are?
Oh, shit.
Dan? Dan Holliday?
Yeah, I'm here. So my name's Dan Holliday, I live here in Oregon City. First of all, I have a comment from Commissioner Mom, she asked me to let you guys know that she considers this a bifurcated thing, that the issue about voting on rates is separate from the Water Master Plan and the funding issue, and that's the way she looks at it. Has nothing to do with my opinion, I'm just passing that word on.
Sure, sure, you'll have time to comment.
I do have a couple of questions. I'm curious, because in the, in the discussions we've had in the water rate group, there is about $900,000 in ongoing capital stuff that happens each year. Now, has that $900,000 been moved out of operations in this chart and into the blue, or is that $900,000 still there?
It's in, it's in the blue. It was always in the capital, and it's in the capital now.
Okay, all right. And in response to William and to some of the other comments that got made about voters and, you know, complications and all that sort of thing, you know, that argument was made about Measure 5 25 or 30 years ago, and the one thing that Measure 5 has done for us is it has gotten us to the point of fixing the, the main issue of our state funding, and that is PERS. And we're coming to the critical place where that's going to have to get fixed, and it never would have happened without Measure 5. And so when we talk about saying that voters don't have the ability to look and think and say, I don't, you know, this is too complicated, I just want to let people, let you go ahead and raise my rates until I can't afford to live in my house anymore, I don't believe that for a second. The reason we did this in the beginning was because rates went up, you know, the numbers have varied, but I think the number the city's using is 67% overnight. Well, that's a big jump. That's, that's a lot of money to a lot of...
There's a lot of lousy communication associated with the jump, too.
Extremely lousy communication. There was one last question I had for the gentleman, and now it's, gosh, that drives me crazy, because I think it's...
Junior, more?
Huh? Not quite.
Junior.
Okay, all right. So we're going through that. I guess if I, if I think of it, I'll ask again, but I do think it's important that you understand, I think there's a way to fix this. It would take a lot of political will, but rather than worry about the rates and getting us, you know, through some complicated system to get to this point, if you just were to say to the folks, here's what we have to have over 20 years to do our maintenance and go out for a geobond, and say, this is what we have to have, not attach it to the rates, attach it to the property tax, we have the space in compression to be able to do that, and just be honest with the folks, and Mr. Danielson behind me has made the suggestion, I believe that we can explain that if we have community leaders in this town from across the political spectrum that stand up and say, this is what we need to do, I think you could pass that bond.
I would make the comment that a geobond would probably be more expensive because you're going to pay interest on the loan. But anyway.
Less expensive than not fixing the roof.
Okay, Greg Danielson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you Commissioners. Just four comments. It doesn't seem like you've looked at the expenses and you've just assumed that the money needed is the money needed. And I think you should ask your staff to look at the expenses to see if there is some possible reductions in cost. And then look at expanding the revenue base to earn more money from people that might not be paying. And then, I think...
Could you, could you expand on that?
Well, the city doesn't pay, so it's shifting the burden from the people that are water customers, they pay for the water, to the benefit of the overall citizens that might not use water, or the businesses or whoever, I shouldn't say businesses, because there is water that isn't used. The city does, I think, a good job, but I see water trucks all the time at fire hydrants without a meter. And we've talked to the city about, and they said, call them, because that is wrong. So there are places to get other revenue. And then, again, a bond measure should be considered. It's taken years to fall behind, and it should be spread out over a longer period of time. But we do need to have good water and good pots. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank O'Donnell.
Well, first I want to thank John for his recitation of services provided. I think it's important, but I don't think it's essentially germane to tonight's issue. I truly want to thank him for redoing that chart at the suggestion of one of the meetings we had, because it breaks out the four pools of money I think we need to deal with, those being the money that represents the servicing of the bond debt, the normal day-to-day operating expenses, the master plan or capital expenditure plan, and replacement facility. And I think, I'm with others in this, that I would suggest possibly taking the funding of the master plan, needs to be broken out and funded separately through a bond measure. And I think visibility and clarity to the general public are key. I've heard reference made to unintended consequences, and I can tell you that at the time of that movement, I was actually one of the presenters on the side of the movement and debated with the finance directors of the city as to what our goals were. And the general public is going to view, the question in the general public mind, quite honestly, is why does the rate rollback and the reduction of revenue reduce our operating revenues below operating requirements when it was represented 20 years ago that the purpose of those revenues was to service the debt? So people see that as continuing to make payments on a car after the car is paid for. Why does that need to continue? So my goal is, quite honestly, the good of the community and clarity and communication, and Mayor Neely, you touched on it, communication is key, and that's what got us into this mess 20 years ago. You know, needs versus revenue, I think there's decisions to be made. We've, the question Mr. Holliday asked about the 900... We've, the question Mr. Holliday asked about the $900,000 that's currently available for capital expenditures, that, that should have been made clear, because we're thinking that we, do we have to start from 2.3, or is the 900,000 included in that 2.3? Because that, the difference is, we have to raise 1.4 per year as opposed to 2.3, so.
It's in the 2.3.
Okay, so.
But you're not funding the 900 right now.
Okay, my clock's running, so we can answer later. So, my goal is.
I will subtract his time.
Please, that was like 30 seconds. My goal is to, you know, maybe recite the challenges you face, and, and with a goal of favorable outcomes, I suggest evaluating the need, and I would ask the voters if the city can retain the current revenue structure rather than a rollback. I would just ask. I wouldn't do any funny stuff, I wouldn't go to the judge and say, hey, do you really think this is what you meant 20 years ago? I think there's an issue of timeliness. It would give the appearance of trying to circumvent the will of the people, and I think the backlash would not be survivable. Again, I do believe in breaking out the pipe replacement in form of a bond, and maybe even make a tough decision on deciding if the money already accumulated for new buildings is best spent in facilities, as opposed to otherwise. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much, Frank.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
That was a, that was a far better sound.
Yes.
Thank you. I hope this survey is really intended to get the feedback as opposed to put forward the recommendations that are here. I think, I, we're getting this feedback here, I think it's important that we get, we get something. I, I mean, I, I think we're going to have to do something, I think we're, I don't have that much of a problem with a rollback, but putting the rates and the rollback together concern me, and I think perhaps we ought to get serious thought to the geo bond piece, because I think, I think you yourself indicated that the rollback and the 3% covers operations. And, a little bit, a little bit, a little bit above it, but not much.
Yeah.
And, and maybe we ought to think of that other alternative as well. Paul Edgar has come on to the screen.
Thank you, Paul Edgar, Oregon City. I'm, I look at the Public Works Building Complex as an example of an area that, that should go into bonding and be separated out of, out of this, and, and the monies that have been taken from water rates and put into the funds so far should be rolled back into being made available for maintenance, and that would soften some of the initial areas where we look at shortfall. Also, I think that previously, we've talked about separating South Fork water rate from our standard water rates, I think that's a reasonable separation, in a sense that it would, whatever happens in South Fork, obviously, we have a 50/50 shot at controlling it in some degree, but it still shouldn't be part of what we're looking at here within the city. It's just, it's a merchandising thing, and I think we're going to, I agree with what's being said, we've got a, a merchandising battle that's going to be, have to be played with the voters, and some of the other recommendations are just going to be very difficult to sell. And I think this geo bonding of some of the maintenance costs out there is, is reasonable. Just, it's a reasonable approach, because in the end, if we don't come up with a plan that's actually saleable, this could be a, a major embarrassment. And, and I think the other proposal with, with the variable rates would not be sellable to the public and would lead to a failure at the ballot box. So, we don't have a lot of options, and whatever options we do take has to be thought out very well and made sure that they, that the public agrees. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a moment, Mr. Holliday. I do, I would like to see that partitioned out in terms of South Fork. I, I don't, I, I don't believe that necessarily eliminates the problem, because South Fork was a part of the picture to begin with. Maybe there's a legal way we could separate it, but if you were to separate it, I think you'd have to divide the funds before we did it, and, and South Fork could operate under its, its own financial management system, but I, I do think it needs to be broken out. I think Mr. Holliday wants to come back forward again.
I just, I remember. My question, so this is, this is quick. You made the, the assumption when you did, did the rate rollback, that you were then going to go back to 94 levels and then take the 3% every year.
Yeah.
Okay. My question is, and, and I, I would question whether there's a legality to do that. I think you can only take the rates, I, I think you could only increase the rates through the times periods that you actually, that, that the city commission actually made that 3% rate increase. So, I think you got to work those into the numbers, because I don't think you can make the assumption that you can go from 94 to today with a 3% rate increase every year if you haven't done that legislatively.
Well, since I might him come up a second time.
Would you go back on the slide on proposed objectives, please?
First, I agree with Dan on that 3% thing. I think we, I believe there were four to six occasions when we chose not to do it. The slide that I was interested in is one called Proposed Objectives. Basically, categorized what happened, yeah, remove and replace outdated provisions of the '96 charter amendment. That's kind of a vague statement.
I know.
And I really take issue with it, because I don't think they're outdated in any way, because look at what's going on in the voter arena today with light rail and people trying to take control of their destiny. So, I don't think it's an outdated provision. I think we need to honor it and maybe explain what's workable as opposed to what's there. Don't try to circumvent it, and it's certainly, I, I wouldn't try, if you replace it, make, try to replace it, make sure there's a good rationale behind it. Take a look at the political environment, folks. Thanks.
Any other comments? Go ahead. Excuse me, Commissioner Holliday, I get, get back off the, off of the screen here.
We discovered when the Blue Heron was shut down, a considerable water misplacement, for better word. Yeah, and I, we don't have any other industry, anything that's that big, but have we looked at other areas that we may be having that kind of thing go on?
Water loss or the opportunity to sell them more water, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, they kind of went around some meters and things, I understand.
Oh, well, I want to be careful about that. We did find some, a, a valve open that should have been closed, that was feeding some of their, their pipe distribution system.
Right.
Some of the confusion of who was running what when is debatable, but I, you know, I wouldn't want to be accusatory there. But yes, we did find that. We don't have any system kind of like that, but, you know, we've got old systems, imperfect mapping, you know, there's, but we don't, you know, when we do our leak detection, we don't hear that kind of movement that you might hear. You know, I don't, I guess I can't guarantee that we wouldn't find something like that, but.
Okay. But we've looked around.
We do have water loss, we do have, you know, water loss that we can't explain, and we're always seeking out that water loss to try and get that number reduced. I think a lot of it's going through some of the, you know, a lot of these meters, this meter technology, even the smaller meters, don't pick up low flow, drips, drips, drips. And, you know, that adds up over time, and so, I think a lot of that's just in our, in our meter, being able to pick up that low flow.
Okay. Thank you.
I know there was a couple of things that I just wrote down several notes here, and I'm trying to find the, the ones that I kind of wanted to touch on. John, the 900,000 means, if I go back to that slide where it shows our current, the bar graph slide, Alita, so, we've always shown 2013, 2013 having just really a little bit of capital left, and so, I'm not quite following the 900,000 number in terms of how it was presented tonight, there were, are the questions that were asked about that, and then your response. So, I always understood that we had, like, if you look at previous years, which we have shown before, we had capital, and that's pretty much dropped off, because we had saved some money for like major improvements for the Mountain View Pump Station and those kind of things, but as far as I'm aware, we, we've got very little in the way of capital program right now.
Yeah. 2013 shows your current contribution to the Public Works Center, and that's basically the only capital. 2014 is when we begin the 2.3 million, and the way we, the way we, we, the impacts were so severe, treating the 2.3 million and the 900,000 as additive, some of those specific projects in the master plan that would be included in the 900,000 are replacement projects. So, if you fund the 2.3 million, you can use some of that 2.3 million to fund the master plan project. So, you'll note, I mean, for 2014, that's $2.3 million worth of capital, it includes the 900,000 in master plan projects.
Okay. Was that the question that you had, Dan?
Yeah.
Was that, was that what you were asking?
And only?
Okay, no. I wasn't sure.
It came up early.
I was kind of wondering.
I don't know if it was Dan who asked it, but it did.
Yeah, it was Frank.
Dan's question.
Well, I think the, the question, you know, in, in the, in the groups that we were talking about, you know, in the two groups that we had before, you were saying that generally, on an annual basis, you spend around $900,000 on, on capital projects.
No.
Yes.
Historically?
Yes.
I said that, I'm.
Isn't that what you heard, Frank? That's what I heard. Yeah. And that this.
Did you mean to say that?
No, I don't think I did, but. Anyway, but I don't, I don't, so.
That was the number looking forward that's recommended in the master plan for the master plan projects, so it may have.
Yeah. Well, we have spent money on capital, I mean, between the jug handle and the Main Street project, so I know we've been spending capital money, I just, you know, now I want to see that slide back that we presented, you know, in the previous year.
History.
I don't remember where that, where that number landed, I don't think I, it was, I don't think it's been a constant 900,000, but.
No, you didn't, and you didn't say it was constant, but you said you've been spending around, you know, $900,000 a year in capital pipe replacement, other kinds of projects, other, other stuff.
Well, we have, I know we've been spending capital money, and I'll, let me look at the, I've got the previous graph, so let me look to see, because that's where I pulled the number from. So, maybe we got, any other?
Well, the key question, we move in forward, what's our total capital need? Is it 900 plus 2.3, or is 2.3 including the 900?
2.3 includes the 900. There, there are a couple of years where.
Because the TV guy is going to be mad if we don't.
There are a couple of years where the specific capital projects exceed the 2.3 million, and that's, that's where you see bumps, like in 2021 and 22, where there's more capital than the 2.3. That's, otherwise, it's 2.3 max.
Oh, I, I know the other point that I wanted to make before I can figure out Dan's, but Craig, Craig, you, you've, Craig's been consistent about asking about that we look expenses and then we expand the revenue base, so I, I just want to acknowledge that we, we, we've heard that, and we want to pursue that. We're also under some pretty tight time constraints, so trying to do that along with everything else that we do, but we also feel like, we feel confident enough to know that that's not going to get us out of our problem. We, we, we think that there's efficiencies that could be found in our existing operation system. One, you know, one is we spend a bunch of time on utility locates, and we, you know, maybe there's a way that we could contract that out and still have some confidence in that. Part of our problem is our level of confidence, but that might be a way that might, you know, pay a contractor to do our utility locates for it, and we wouldn't use existing staff to do that. That's one example. And we want to look at that. We just know in this timeframe, we're not going to be able to show you numbers that we're going to be confident in, and so, that's, that's kind of our, our plan. But, but even if we get there, you know, and we make some adjustments that way, we don't, we know that's not going to kind of solve our problems, so just wanted to say that. And I think, I have the PowerPoint from one of our meetings, I've been keeping them all, but this one was before the city commission work session last time, and we had a chart, again, similar to this one, we went back to 2010, and in 2010, there was 900,000 shown in there. That, that we did spend, and I don't know, you know, I can't tell you what we were beforehand, but that's probably where that 900,000 came from. And my recollection was, a lot of that was related to major capital that we'd saved, you know, saved some money for and were able to spend out, but, and so, we spent it all in one year. I can't remember if that was on the Mountain View Pump Station, I, I just don't remember the details of that.
It's over there, not above there.
Yeah.
Eli said that we're losing 16% of water out of the major Mountain View reservoir. Is that correct? No, it's 16% of the citywide leak. The citywide.
Of leaks in the city water system, not just in isolated.
Mayor.
But is it the Mountain View, the number one reservoir, or we lose?
I'm, I'm sorry, can I just, can I just break in for a second? Can, can we try and get folks on?
Yeah, we're getting some technical, I mean, we're talking about the bond issue at this.
I guess, just if we can even just make sure we get folks on the microphone, and we have them request to come up, so that it's not a.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, if we talk about different, different issues and where the water's going so far, I don't know if we're really dealing with this particular issue, so if somebody still has something on the rates and, and, and our consideration of putting out a amendment recommendation, I'd stick to that. Now, hearing done, we'll take the manager's report now.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
Did you check with David?
I did get an email telling me to do anything, and I don't have anything else to report, so.
Well, with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session.
Thank you.